So, thank you all for being so energetically engaged. We have about 45 minutes to drive this baby home. And to start that off, I've asked Lou to take the first shot at, did we succeed? And I thought that was sort of a premature question until after we've had dinner tonight, but nonetheless, Lou's going to give his shot and then give this back to me and then we're going to work our way through the other questions that are on our agenda. Lou?
Perfect. So, did we succeed? I'll tell you, I think we did, and I'll tell you why. I started, when we first started having the discussion about this retreat and its format, the first and most fundamental goal was to get the leadership in this room sitting around and collaborating and talk about the big ideas and the issues that affect us all and affect this system. Board leadership, system leadership, our campus presidents, leadership here in the chancellor's office. So, just the fact we got together and got to actually get some of this great material up on the wall was a home run. But then I looked at the substance of what came out today, and I didn't just have kind of the instinctual, did we succeed? I can see it in the written word on the wall. There is no doubt that there is a core of fundamental understanding and a basic place from which I think all of us are trying to move the CSU in the same direction together. And so often, and we were just mentioning, we huddled up here at the end, right? We get to have discussions about some of these, you know, big issues. You know, I was very stuck with something Margaret said. Through our students, we transform the lives of individuals, families, and communities. We don't ever talk about that as a fundamental principle. We may talk about a piece of it. We talk about student success, or we talk about community service learning. And we always talk about it in the context of one particular item at one period in time that comes to the board for a discussion. And we all, as board members, take in the information and we have a thoughtful discussion and boom, we're on onto the next piece of business. And we're never thinking of it in the contextual whole of how important it is and a part of what it is that we do to transform lives, transform California through the California State University. And today, we started those discussions. It also was informing for all that we have to do ahead, that as California evolves, as our students evolve, for Mo, I will say, as technology evolves, we have a lot to do to keep up and to maintain the commitment we have made in our mission. So, today, we succeeded, and today, we set a pathway for future success. And I appreciate everybody's thoughtful input and participation. Chancellor?
Thank you, Lou. So, as is a tendency of mine, I don't know if it's a good tendency or a bad tendency, but I asked the vice chancellors to, just as we went into break, they, I didn't know this was coming, and they certainly didn't know it was coming. So, I've asked them to summarize their views on the rest of these questions here, to provide just a few points of perspective, not to be inclusive and comprehensive. We'd be here until much later in the evening. But then also to invite others who may have a burning point to make that they think the group at large would benefit by hearing at this hour. So, on what we have heard, we have Fram and Lauren, and anybody else who'd like to make some comments. Fram and Lauren going first, or it's a duo?
All right, there we go. And I think for the camera guys, keep moving and separating. It makes it a lot easier for them to follow you around.
So, the first issue that we were asked, we were asked to look at was, what did we hear? What were the major takeaways? And the first thing that Lauren and I talked about was that there was a lot of commonality. If you look at all the different groups, and even though they had different touchstones, they had different subjects that they talked about, there are threads that weave through all this and quilt this all together into who the CSU really is. And that was both affirming and energizing to have that happen. So, we came up with four major takeaways, and Lauren will take the first one.
The first thing that we heard very clearly from all groups is that all students really do matter for the California State University system, and that the definition of that can be hinged upon the notion of student success, which is defined quite broadly for us. What we mean by that is that we can begin, or we do begin, as early as the pre-collegiate stage where students are wrestling with the notion of where they're going to be trained, but more importantly, also wrestling with the fact that they may not be as prepared as they need to be in order to enter our doors. And so, we understand the importance of early engagement of those students, not only those students, but their teachers as well, in terms of the kind of outreach that we do with K-12 schools. And then, once we are able to identify those students and then attract them into our campuses, we then understand that student success begins at that point in continuing their experience, because we've identified them early on, by preparing them with the requisite knowledge, skills, and professional dispositions so that they can not only be effective in practice once they leave our doors, but that they're certainly also very attractive to those in the workforce and those in graduate and professional schools, as well as become productive citizens. And then even further than that, is really understanding student success in terms of keeping our hands on our graduates to make sure that our employers really understand the value that our students bring based on the preparation that we've provided to them, as well as the fact of graduate and professional schools really understanding the kind of knowledge and skill outcomes that we provided as well to make them good candidates for their respective programs. That's one thing that we've heard. Here's what else we've heard.
The second big learning that we heard was that Lou didn't just touch on it, but went into it eloquently, and that is that CSU transforms the lives of individuals, of families, of communities, and we went so far as saying, the state and the nation. And it does that in so many different ways, from the academic offerings that we provide and the preparation that we provide to students for their life outside in the workforce, but the holistic approach of what we do for giving them an experience in life and a frame of reference for growth and development as individuals, as citizens, and creating a common bond among our students, with so many of them, and quilting them into the state in civic engagement, as good citizens, as community service, and all the things that we talked about during the course of our discussions. Under that, we talked a lot about the issue of diversity and what that really means. There's the big D, diversity for lawyers, and what that, and we heard a little bit about that. But there's so many different aspects to diversity, and we have such a diverse student population, a diverse faculty, and the idea that we are California's university is exactly the way in which we should be perceived in light of who we are. We talked about the idea of intergenerational mobility, which I just love the way that that rolled off. I can't remember whose tongue it was, but it rolled off so well, and it is exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about moving people up and leveling people off in our cultural and societal environment. And of course, there's the economic development that goes along with that as well, and turns us into the economic engine that we are for our local communities. And I think we tend to forget sometimes that our campuses are economic engines for our cities and towns and communities first, as employers and innovators and developers, and then for the state with whom we send off and where they go. So, that was something that resonated across the discussion that we had as a takeaway.
And tied to that is the notion of our ability for our campuses to take students who are enrolled students, who perhaps have had uneven preparation, but by the time they graduate, they even up, and that they're ready, and they're just as competitive, if you will, as students who have graduated from any other institution, including Ivy League institutions. And so, that is a piece as well, that in terms of our story, that we believe that we need to tell and then understand what's underneath that so that there is clarity in what we do to really get students shored up, if you will, or prepared, if you will, to the level that you would find other students, regardless of the kind of underpreparation that they may have received prior to coming to our respective campuses. So, that leads to the third notion of quality leads to excellence. And we've heard so many examples of that throughout the day, certainly at the programmatic level, in terms of the rich and broad programs that we offer, certainly those that are diverse in nature, and that our curricula isn't just about knowledge and skills, that it really is about preparing students for the diverse workforce, that it's also preparing them to handle complex situations that they will certainly encounter, be it in the workforce or in their respective lives. But that more importantly, that excellence piece ties into becoming leaders as well, leaders in their respective fields. And so, those are some of those soft attributes that we heard that was discussed by this group that talked about students, that those soft attributes that you can't really always teach within a classroom, but you find to be important, and through the kind of mentoring experiences that occur, certainly with our faculty and staff and our students, that that's how those soft attributes are actually addressed. The institutional quality is not driven by student preparedness as they come in, we talked about that, but the ability to transform them to be prepared as they exit our campuses. So, quality leads to excellence.
And then the last piece that we heard as we were listening, and this one seemed to be more of an undercurrent, but as important for us to think about going forward and the message that we want to share with each other and drive us forward and externally with our community and our state, is that we are innovative and creative, whether it's in the research that we do. And we mentioned that we are not necessarily perceived as a research institution, but we know that we do research, but we don't just do it for research, for the research sake. We do it as part of student learning. We do it as part of development. We do it as part of preparation for our students, which makes that research even more robust and even more important, and frankly, even more exciting. We hear at board meetings and we hear on our campuses about the high-impact practices that we engage in all over the institution, whether it's mentoring, or team building, or all the different practices that we are engaged in. And we are on the cutting edge of moving students to degree in a more effective way without sacrificing quality, but reducing their time to degree. And that is no easy feat, and we are, it is our creativity and our innovation that is leading us on that path. We also often forget that we educate the educators, the educators of this state and the educators of this nation. And so, we have a huge impact on not just the students that are in our university, not just the alumni that will leave this university and go into business and will drive the economic engine of the state, but the people that will leave our university and go and teach in K-12, and take what they learn here and move that and drive that forward. And the more innovative and creative we can be there, the more we can have a high impact on that K-20 line that was being talked about. And I don't think we pay as much attention to that as we could and should. And finally, we decided we're fearless. We're not afraid to change, that the discussion about the master plan potentially being outdated doesn't stop us from moving forward and finding new ways to deal with that, whether it's online education, whether it's new satellite campuses, whether it's high-impact practices, whatever it might be. We are and should stand tall as innovative and creative.
And to stand tall as laboratories of innovation, where it's okay to make mistakes, because when you do make those mistakes, you learn from them, and then you try again and make sure that you are able to achieve and master that which you're trying to achieve as a university, with our students and our faculty being the leads on that as well.
Does anybody else have a compelling thought to add to that remarkable summary by Fram and Lauren? Leroy does, so he has to grab a microphone. And I would add one word about us, and that's resilience. Pass that over to Leroy.
I think they said it, but I wanted to clarify it more, because I think it struck me that one of the things that we do is we better prepare graduates for the workforce. Our students are more prepared, as the people in the business have told me, that they can get a Cal grad and then get a East Bay grad, and the East Bay grad is more prepared to go to work. The Cal grad starts talking about, how do I have your job, rather than, what do I have to do for you to make you successful? And our students are ready to go into the workforce, more prepared and better because of the applied types of work that we do and the applied research that we do with our students.
Great. Thank you, Leroy. Steve Relier is going to speak a little bit about alignment of board system and campuses. And I know since he's at the table with Jeff, you'll recognize that one shoe doesn't fit all feet.
Yeah, Jeff has pretty big shoes. I don't think it could fit in those shoes. You know, as we talk about board alignment, I think one thing that's valuable to revisit is what is it that we're trying to align? And I'll go back to Tim's comments at the beginning of this afternoon's session. We have, we already have 23 roughly strategic plans for 23 campuses. And these plans had a lot of thought put into them. They reflect the needs, the vision, the dreams of those campuses, a lot of time, a lot of consultation. What we don't want to do is do something that in any way does not add value to what they've already done. So, it's been suggested, and I think it's a good suggestion, that maybe in whatever document we produce, it doesn't even have the word strategic in it. Maybe it uses other words, and maybe it is more of an all-encompassing vision document that builds on those 23 strategic plans and adds value to those plans, and provides a context for when the board of trustees see a transaction or an item on the agenda. It gives them a better way of judging that. It provides a litmus test for the council of presidents when they're deliberating and talking about items. I think it could help provide a stronger platform to build on the success that we've had in Sacramento this year and with many of our key funders and stakeholders. It could provide a platform for us to take that to the next level, if we can do it in a very compelling, informative, clear way that doesn't try to be all things to all people, but is very focused on what matters to the future of the state of California. In terms of possible next steps, in terms of that alignment, some steps might be to, first of all, as we had talked about, is getting out this in a useful format, the output from this afternoon's session, to the trustees and the presidents and the vice chancellors to take a look at and ask for their feedback, and then maybe go an iteration to try to organize that. As some of us looked at today's output, I think some of us realized that the actual headings of those touchstones may not be the most important part of what came out today. Maybe it's really what was buried in the content. Some of these ideas, which you see, kind of as was remarked about earlier, do flow through a lot of the overall headings. So, we may decide, as we go through this consultative process with the campuses and the trustees and the presidents, that we may tweak or change, you know, those headings. I think Tim has scheduled visits to the campuses. That may be an opportunity, depending on where we are in this process, to have him bring up these thoughts about a vision for a CSU in the year 2020, or 2023, or some other year. What are the characteristics of the university we all want to be a part of? I think there's an opportunity here for the presidents, once we're at the right stage, to sit down with their cabinets, probably in the near future, and talk to them about what we have, what we are outlining as an overall vision for the 23 campuses of the California State University. It's an opportunity for the vice chancellors to sit down with their teams and get some understanding about where this institution is heading and get their thoughts about how to best do that. One of the things I guess I'll end on is, in terms of my comments, is, and actually, in the planning committee, I think Becky brought this up, and it really resonated with me, is, I think she said, and I'll paraphrase what she said, it was along the lines of, let's make sure we just don't produce another big, thick document that sits on a shelf somewhere. Let's think about what the output might be. Maybe we should, you know, in keeping with innovation, in keeping with cutting-edge technology, in keeping with what we're trying to achieve, maybe it should be something different. Maybe it should be a very thin document attached to a video, something that says you find on YouTube or something like that. And so, I think that is worth thinking about, is, again, we want this to add value, not subtract value, or just be something that's put on a shelf. And it really has to leverage the great work that's gone on, on the 23 campuses, to generate their strategic plans. I think if it is in the right format, it could then become organic and not out of date. It could grow and evolve as institution grows and evolves. Any other thoughts that anyone, yes? Yes, Libby?
So, we'll think about sort of the work that's been done today, and, thank you. With the work that we've done today, and I know, again, it's going to, when we think about next steps, I'm just trying to think of what your comment about adding value to the strategic plans that are in place today. This, though, is this supposed to be the overarching sort of vision guide that then, as the campuses, of course, have their strategic plans, but they're going to seek to align so that we're traveling down the same path, I guess is my point, is we're all going in the same direction. How we might get at it from a campus approach will differ, of course, but we're being guided, you know, for lack of a better term, like guiding principles, you know, our vision to get there. I just want to make sure that that's, that's an end outcome.
Yeah, I think the way you described it is the way I would describe it, but it's really up to all of the people in this room, how we do this. I mean, that the, I think what, as you, you know, one of the questions that all the groups was asked was, does this affect this thing, my touchstone, affect all the campuses? I think we heard in general, yes, these things affect all the, there were central threads that regardless of which camps it is, most of what we've talked about affects those campuses. So, building on those threads, and I think one thing that the trustees and the presidents and the system can do for the campuses is kind of run interference and get out the story in the most compelling, informative, clear way as possible to our major supporters and stakeholders and funders, and transmit this message so that it's in everyone's best interest to invest and support the CSU. To me, that's kind of the bottom line. Shouldn't that be the bottom line? Because the campuses' strategic plans are really charting a course for those campuses in terms of their academic quality, the programs that they're going to invest in, the kind of degrees they're going to produce. What we can do is get them the resources and support to make them successful. At least that's, but it really is up to all of us, I think. Eduardo?
Well, it seems to me that the way you've described it and the way you've put it together today, this is really, you're developing the, what is the imminent strategic framework of the 23 strategic plans that the campuses have. And so, it would be helpful internally for people to recognize themselves in that framework. They see, oh, this is what we're doing when placed in a statewide context. And then for communication purposes, it allows us to portray us more effectively.
Ruben?
Picking up on your last set of words, investment. Picking up on your last words, I think you mentioned investments a couple of times. Perhaps one way to eventually frame this document is not in the typical strategic plan format that everybody is doing, and you can put a hundred of them together, but perhaps putting as a prospectus for an investor. You know, the prospectus of why the CSU is a good investment. It's a good investment for the individual student, for their family, for the community, for the state, and the region. It might give you a different format, so it might be a little more appealing.
Yeah, I think that's an outstanding. Jeff?
I just want to echo that. I think a case for investment is, speaks to the state, speaks to our trustees, but it also speaks to public-private partnerships. So, I just want to, I like that idea, just want to endorse it.
We have Tomas.
Yeah, I just, we just completed our 2015-2020 strategic plan involving literally hundreds of members of our university community. And in that process, I actually read strategic plans from several of the campuses. And I will tell you that this is almost verbatim. I mean, student success, branding, entrepreneurial ship, community service, service learning. It really is an amazing alignment with the CSU's being those that I've read throughout the system. Well done. Yep.
I think for timing reasons, we're going to move to the next topic, but thanks, everybody, for your comments.
Thank you, everyone. So, the next three italicized issues on our agenda, who are the external audiences and how do we engage them? How do we secure support from our stakeholders? And how can we test the authenticity and clarity of the message? We started to touch on that just here at the end, and I'll ask Garrett and Lori to come forward to discuss those three elements with you. Garrett, Lori? And there's a microphone somewhere. Here we go.
Okay. Okay, so, I think we've touched on a lot of, throughout the day and the last couple of speakers, about messaging and who our audiences are and so forth, but some reflections on what I've heard and hopefully engaging some of you. As usual, I like to start by questioning the premise of my task. And so, when I read the question, who are the external audiences and how do we engage them, what I heard today was, we can't simply focus just on external audiences, that our audience is both internal and external. And I think depending on the message, in some respects, we might even prioritize an internal audience on what we're messaging and why. I think that when we, when we think of who our audience is, who our external audience is, in many respects, it's the community, community at large. And how we engage them, I think, I'd really like to hear a little more from the campuses on that, because I can't presume to tell you that you need to engage your community, because you're already doing that in many different ways, many successful ways. So, in some respects, I think maybe developing some best practices and shared best practices among the campuses might be an interesting path forward. But I think there's so many great examples of how you are engaging your community at large about CSU. We talk a lot about lawmakers and engaging, communicating to lawmakers, and some of the subsequent questions here about how do we secure support from stakeholders, and how do we test the authenticity. I think in some respects, when we think about lawmakers, the question really ought to be, how do we maintain and increase that support? Because we saw this year, I think we had a pretty effective and productive communication strategy with lawmakers, and I think the results were there. I think the challenge now is, how do we maintain that? We spent a lot of time at our table when we were talking about quality and messaging that, the importance of not only faculty and students, but staff. And I think that those are three very important components of an internal messaging strategy. But also, you know, I don't want the irony to be lost on the fact that our table, quality, had the guy who oversees communications for the system, the guy who runs his own PR firm, and the guy who runs his own media operation. We couldn't come up with messages for quality. And it wasn't because, you know, we're not smart people, we might not be, but that wasn't the reason. The reason was because it's complicated, and it's difficult, and it takes a little bit of time to test the questions and the problems and the solutions. So, I'm jumping around a little bit, but I'm kind of touching on, how can we test the authenticity and clarity of message? And I think that's, I think that's a tough question, but an important one to be effective. And I think that there's a difference there also between internal and external audiences. I think we get a lot of instant feedback from lawmakers. We all get phone calls, we all get immediate reactions when we're visiting them on the authenticity and clarity of our message. I think that you all on your campuses get a lot of instant feedback on the authenticity and clarity of your messages through your campus forums, your meetings, and your dialogues with students, staff, and faculty. But the community at large is a much But the community at large is a much more difficult thing to measure in terms of authenticity and clarity of message, and one that we might need to spend a little more time on as this gets developed and how we do that. I think Doug spoke to that a little bit earlier. I jumped around a little bit, both before and after the middle topic, so Lori, if you wanted to talk a little bit about securing support.
Well, I think you actually addressed a lot of that, too. But I'm struck by, it's probably not my expertise area to talk about how to secure support, but what I'm struck by is sort of thinking, you know, we've had success. Garrett mentioned that, we've had success. So I brought a prop, right? So we've had success. What's that?
I was wondering what that was.
That's my, that's my prop for the day. I mean, so we've had success because we coalesced around some common themes that helped tell our story effectively. I think whether they're socks, or maybe next time we need a different article of clothing or a different branding tool to get that message. But I think the thing that is so powerful from today is the stories are right in this room. And we could go around each one of these here, whether it's we're innovative, whether it's we're student-focused, whether we have quality, which is hard to describe, whether we are for the public good. And we need to find ways to leverage these stories that are in this room, to the extent we haven't already. To the extent we've had success, we already are doing some of that. But there's, there are some nuggets that came out today in some of these conversations all around these white papers, that if we could coalesce around them, and maybe it's not a pair of socks, but maybe it's some other sort of theme that allows each campus to operate within itself, then I think we will reach those stakeholders in the same way that we just have done. But I just, I can't say enough good things about the ideas that came out of here. And I will probably in my tenure now in the CSU, never forget, we are California's university, and that we transform lives, families, and communities. And we could go to state and nation as well. But those, those are some powerful words. And when I think about the branding efforts that are underway for the CSU, those kind of things, how do we, how do we wrap those in? Because those are things people understand, people live, people experience, they see it, they feel it. And when you start talking about it and telling these stories about how we do that, how we do it in our communities, I think we will have a lot of, a lot of continued success because I think we've already had some there. So probably not my expertise, but I would really like to hear from all of you about the ways that we think you can leverage what we've done today to tell that story better, to really engage the stakeholders. I think you all have more of the answers, perhaps, in this area than certainly I ever will. I also just want to mention, we're also up here on behalf of Larry, our colleague. And he, you know, he, one of his ideas was, you know, one of the, in the past, successful ways was to enter in like compacts with the governor and the legislature. And maybe there is an opportunity now with, with some success to say, well, let's sit down and have some conversations about some long-term issues and some long-term commitments for the CSU. So that was one of Larry's ideas, too. So can we, can we hear from some of you about ideas to do this? Millie, we'll start there.
I know many of us are doing this, but I think when we go into the communities, we have to remember the different communities and speak in their language. And so going into the Latino community, the Korean-American community, Vietnamese community, the African-American community, and speak to them in their space and have them understand our message and that the CSU is a place for them. So when we talk about all of the things like Es el momento at Dominguez Hills, or Familia Familial, or the Vietnamese opportunity we had on our campus, we're talking to the families, who many are first generation, low income, who really have no clue what the CSU can do for their children because they're afraid. And so I think we have to always remember that when we do the messaging, it's not only in English, and who are the population that we really are here to serve.
Really good points, really, really good. Who else has some ideas about how to do that? Because these are, these are really smart. Come on, one more, and then we'll turn it back to Tim, but one more. Come on. No? No takers? No? Okay, we'll get Mo, he's got to need the microphone, though.
I think what happens many times when we try to have communications or whatever, we end up putting so much statistics and numbers and rather than stories. Stories is the currency of human communication. Stories is what people remember and connect with. And I think each and every one of them in our campuses, we have many of those individuals in terms of all of the hardships that they have gone and succeeded and how much they're contributing back. So I think if we can just collect some of those stories, those ones could be far more powerful than just numbers, impacts, and figures.
Hear, hear. And did somebody else have something to say? And I'll say, you know, as a, as a first-generation college student from a low-income family, I prefer to be a story rather than a statistic. And I'll end on that note. Where are we going, Tim?
I thought that was reasonably well-done with one exception. When Garrett referred to the master plan as being outdated, I was sitting here thinking that I'm a product of the master plan. So my retirement, so tonight we're having my retirement dinner. I was misconstrued. I, I do think the point that Millie said so well is, because we are California, there's what, 38 going on 40 million people, we are not a monolith. And our campuses are not campuses as if they're all the same. Our fact, you know, where is the student voice? Well, it's a whole bunch of different voices, right? And that's one of the things that makes this complicated, but doesn't mean we don't have to double down and tell it in a relevant way. So I, let me just finish up today, again, thanking everybody. I think it's palpable to me about the passion that we share about the CSU and what we're trying to accomplish, what we are accomplishing. I would say that I reviewed my blue sheet that I wrote this morning to prepare my earlier comments, and I think we touched on just about every one on there, and if we didn't touch on it, we certainly got some insights on it. So I feel like we are more than roughly right and directionally correct. You know, we did not spend any time discussing strategic plan and traditional or a plan of intent or a vision or a prospectus. I like that word and that idea a lot, Ruben. But, you know, the vision and the prospectus is kind of where my head is right now. And one of the things about a vision that I find interesting to think about is that if you go to an optometrist or an ophthalmologist, it's, you know, the acuity seeing clearly what's right in front of you now, right? And I think when you look at it from that point of view, that's what vision is, is can I read without squinting those that chart 20 feet away? But as leaders, I think vision is, can you see with some degree of accuracy the horizon? And can you help shape what that horizon's going to be by the actions you take today? And that's a more difficult thing to do. It's a more difficult thing to do for many reasons. You know, the proverbial, you know, passing the ball to where the other player's running to or the puck, you know, all of those quotes that come out of sports or out of, out of a dance, you know, things of that nature. Anticipating where things are going to be, or even more difficultly, anticipating where things need to be, right? And need to be for our students when they leave here four or five, six years later to get into the workforce that 10 or 15 years from now has a totally different kind of culture. So I challenge us not to get stuck on the 2020 vision. While it's important to see what's in front of us this year, next year, and the year thereafter, it's always important that we help shape and anticipate the horizon, recognizing that you never get, you never get to the horizon. It's always moving ahead of you. And that's the job of leadership, and I know the people in this room are up to it. We will summarize this conversation, and we will get that around everyone. Our goal is to do so by the next Council of Presidents meeting and spend some of that time with the president next month discussing this. From that, I think we will want to shape a summary document that captures and integrates some of these points in a way that a night or two of thinking about them and writing on them can tie the main themes together. My guess is we're going to have touchstones and touchstoneettes or primary touchstones, secondary touchstones. We'll come up with the right words to descri, top what? Touch what? Touch pebbles, oh, there we go. So we'll have to get a lesson on the difference between a boulder, a rock, a stone, and a pebble. I don't know if this is going to go very far at all, but we'll try. And then I, then the plan will be to start bringing in other stakeholders, formally and informally. And each of you will carry some of that on your campuses or among students or among staff, the Senate. I will be getting around to the campuses this year again, and certainly be a piece of open forums or whatever we can organize on the campuses to have people, you know, we'll get out a one-pager of ideas and have people's reaction to that. Because at the end of the day, both the conversation is enabling, but also the conversation can provide clarity to us and then buy-in so we can actually execute as a system. I think that's about all I wanted to say, other than to pass it a little bit over to Lars, a little bit on the logistics and steps. I will say this evening that Kevin Starr is joining us at dinner. Kevin is known to many of you either personally or by reputation. He is a world-renowned historian, perhaps best known for his multi-volume work on the history of California. And he's been, for a decade ending in 2004, so that's a decade ago, for the decade prior to that, he was the California State Library, and he's a professor currently at SC, but he has also taught at Davis and at Riverside and at Berkeley. But most importantly, he was on the faculty at San Francisco State. And so that's the only reason we invited him this evening. And he's going to spend some time through his lens a bit about the history of our university and public higher education in California. And if he says the master plan is old and outdated, well, I'll just have to get counseling on that. Lars, on logistics, what else do we need to say?
Over at Kussel, Young, and Logan tonight, 6 o'clock, 6:45 will be dinner. And that's, as the chancellor mentioned, we have a speaker tonight, so we'll just try and get in our seats on time.
Yeah, we'll try and get going on time, and I think there's other things that people are going to do afterwards. So we'll be, we'll be on time, not rushed, but we'll be on time.
Okay.
And so.
Dave said the shuttle was at 6:15.
From here?
At the hotel.
Okay, so it's 5:20, and by the time you walk out of the room, it's 5:30. So Letitia, what's the?
From, from where to where?
So is there a shuttle from now to the hotel? Yeah, but there are several people that have cars. So if somebody's looking for a ride, make sure you connect.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have cars in the room. Let me, okay. So Fram, where's Fram? So we're finishing our meeting for today. What is it I need to say for the public record? We're adjourning the California State University trustees meeting until tomorrow. How did I do? At 8:00 AM in the Dumpkey Auditorium in Long Beach. Thank you very much.